Well, folks, at seven o'clock, we'll stand for the pledge. If.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Water shut-off meeting for renters. Do we have anyone here that doesn't look at? We can always sneak back if we have to. Danny Roberts, you've got our contract.
So I gave you gentlemen emails and put in your box the new contract for Gov.OS, which was part of Co-File. They have now, they're kind of two different groups that work together. I have come in at the very end of Suzanne's five-year contract. They are not doing a five-year contract. It's a one-year contract. It has gone up 10% for that one year from $350 to $385 a month. The other differences are that microfilm was included. It is no longer included. Microfilm is not overly safe. It's not very stable, and it doesn't do me any good sitting in my vault if something happened. It's going to go to the state probably sooner than later because I checked around and the state will take it for free and store it, but I don't know how long the state will store it for free, but, you know, right now they will. There, I think the very best option is to have it backed up to the cloud in two different spots. One on the East Coast, one on the West Coast. That's $500 a year plus three cents for every image of every land record there is. Giving you a kind of a breakdown of the last four years. I will say that things are slowing down recording-wise because there's nothing for sale in Fairhaven anymore.
Really?
Closings are very low for sale. Mortgages are drying up a little bit because of the price. So the amount of recordings, as you can see in 2000, you know, it was over 2000. 2021, it was over 2,000 pages this year. You know, I may hit 1,500. I don't even know that I'll hit that, honestly. There is a one-time fee to back up everything that is currently on the system for $6,300. There's enough money in my account for restoration. It would pay for that easily. And I would happily pay for that and the $500 a year, the flat fee for the storage. Costs into the different company. They had a breach last summer, I think summer of '22, and they were down for several days. Hopefully, this doesn't happen, but certainly with two backups on both coasts, we'd be better off. They no longer pay for any hardware, nothing. No printers, no computer, no server, no anything. I'm still waiting to hear back if they're going to pay for the volumes in the paper. I've been told that they haven't made a decision, but if they were to bet, they would bet nothing. So when it comes time for my budget in a couple of weeks, all of that money is now going to have to go into my budget.
That's what I was going to ask you. I didn't see it. It's not a line item here yet?
Yeah, because I'm throwing it in there because that will be under supplies.
Okay.
You know, a volume is $250, just for the volume, not including the paper.
I mean, the contract overall doesn't show up in the budget yet, or am I missing something?
No, this is totally different.
Okay.
So I, you know, it's due, it's renewed on the 11th of, 12th of November. Again, it's just for one year. They sent me a five-year contract in the spring, which was kind of outrageous. And I said, can we rethink this? And they came back with a, yeah, don't do anything. And then they came back with, we're not doing any five years at the moment. We're doing one year.
So you actually have to have this?
I have to have it, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I was kept waiting for more information because they keep telling me there's more information to come. But some of it has to do with the fact that they can't deal, they're working with the state on certain things. But the state, because of the flooding in Montpelier, that has slowed down some issues there. There's probably by next year, we're going to be doing e-filings. This company will handle e-filings. I know nothing about how that's going to work, not a clue. Just still in the grips of knowing it's coming.
It will cost money. We know that much.
Exactly. Yep, yep. They say it will streamline things, and it probably will, but not for a while.
So where are we going to pull this 6,000?
I would say I'm going to pay that from my reserve.
Oh, you are? Okay, okay.
I would happily pay that from my restoration fund. I think it's a good use for it because it's restoring it.
Yep.
And then there, oh, the other part is before it was, the microfilm was free. They didn't charge per image. They now do. So it's, if we went microfilm, which I think is a bad idea, it's six cents an image. The PDFA, which goes onto the cloud, is three cents an image.
Yeah.
But that's billed in January for the preceding year. And that's really is three cents an image. It won't be astronomical, no matter what. But the $6,300, that can easily come out of mine. It won't touch the budget, down budget at all.
Sounds good.
So what are, what are we?
I've got a question. Where's, what's our options to recruit some of this money? Can we charge folks something?
We do. People are charged $3.50 a page if they print it from the server service. Where if they come to me, it's a dollar a page. But when they use the service, it's $350 a page.
Okay. Should we whip on our version? Would they come to you to compensate for something?
No, that's all state. That's, yeah, state dictates.
So we can't, they can't charge anymore?
No, it's a dollar a page. That's state mandate, state rules.
So what do you need from us? Approval to pull out of the?
I need approval. I need someone to sign that contract.
You have that?
Yeah.
Good question. Oh, good.
So the microfilm we have, we're going to send up to Mont-
Permanently now, yeah.
We're going to send up to Montpelier for them to save it?
Store it, yeah.
Store it? Considering the recent history in Montpelier?
This isn't Montpelier. It's Middlesex. It's at the state library, state archives. So it'll be in Middlesex.
Is that near Montpelier?
It's Montpelier, but it's not, they have a beautiful storage place.
It's not downtown, it's not downtown by the river, under the river.
Okay. It's like, it's definitely the best place to store it. It's in, it's in Middlesex. Is there, and it'll go there, yeah.
I don't know the geography up there, so barely know the geography here.
But if anything happened and we had to use that microphone, first we'd have to go get it, and then we'd have to find someplace that-
Reads it.
Reads it, and then someplace that, I mean, sadly, I have my own microphone printer or reader at my house because that's me. But I can't print anything. So, you know, unless you want to come to my house and look at these, it won't do.
Well, library, probably.
And so, and you, you like the work they do, and that's what you recommend?
The issue I find with them, and that's partly because they've kind of broken apart, is now one group handles one thing, one group handles another. But if I have a question, I have, I think once they've called me back, almost every other time, I, they just are right there to answer the questions. And if I have a, have an issue, they can fix it instantaneously. I've had no problem with them. They're all very nice to work with.
So we're looking for a motion. I'll make a motion that we have the select board chair sign the contract for Gov.OS?
Yes, yeah.
Second.
So that, that, well, we really don't know what the whole cost is. We can't really include that in the, in the motion.
We're paying for my reserve for the big one time.
We could put that in order, so I'm paying for my reserve.
Yeah, you probably ought to have it come out of the reserve, so.
My restoration fund.
Okay, let me withdraw that motion and try that one more time. I'll make a motion that we have the chair sign the Gov.OS contract that will include- G-O-V-O-S.
G-O-V, and then capital O-S. Capital O and little s.
And that's a contract extension.
And, and that the one-time expense for conversion of $6,350 come out of the restoration reserve fund.
That's great. That's a lot better. Thank you.
Six thousand.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, actually, I just had one question. The images that we currently have on microfilm, are those going to be duplicated with historic conversion?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, we're going to have backups of them anyway?
We're going to have backups of, but you know what? If they're going to go take them into Middlesex and even, even to clear off a six-by-six-inch spot in my vault, I'm happy. There's still a little room in there.
So that's $6,350. That's a one-time fee?
Yep.
For the year.
That's for taking everything that's already been digitized and backing it up to the cloud.
But that's a one-time fee for this one year? Next year, we got to start all over?
Next year, it's a three cent per image fee, and that will be billed in January for the preceding year. So it'll be like maybe, it'll be less than $100, I would think.
What percentage of the state copy charge do we get?
We get the dollar.
You get the entire dollar?
We get the entire dollar, yeah. And with Co-File, they, it's $350 we get, and we split it. So we get $1.50, they get $1. So we do get a little bit more. And it's, a lot of researchers do use it.
And it looks like the record restoration money, there's over 40,000.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody okay? You put the second here?
I'll, right, second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Bobby, can I get that? Do you want me to pick it up tomorrow, or what's?
You can have it right now.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Hopefully, next year will be more than a year.
Danny, I may have scribbled on that somewhere on it.
Oh, that's okay. I can, I can make another copy just as a signature for you. Thank you.
Okay. Where were we? Where was I before I lost my mind? By the way, I didn't make a copy for you. I assumed you had. This is the zoning rights.
Oh, yeah.
I assumed you had. Amendments to the agenda. Okay, nothing wrong with that. Approval of the minutes of October 17th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October 17th is written?
Second. Additions, deletions, subtractions?
I failed to include in there, and I had it in my notes, do it, I missed it, that the meeting was tonight instead of tomorrow night. But it's not the minutes.
Yeah, I guess we probably should be adding. Right?
Okay, well, I'll move to amend the minutes as written to add a indication that the next select board meeting will be held on October 30th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, I have one, one just note. My wife's name is Tracy.
Isn't it we?
No, we, yeah. Her parents, her parents have apologized to her. We're giving her a man's name.
I will make an amendment to my motion that Tracy Richards' name be spelled T-R-A-C-Y.
Thanks, guys.
You got a second to my amendment?
I'll second it. Second. Everybody understand?
You're going to vote three times now.
We're going to, we're going to vote once with all the amendments.
I put a line in there saying thanks to Claire for all her hard work, and mistakes happen, so, but.
Actually, I enjoy it, but I didn't, tell her I apologize. I didn't have.
Most people would, nobody knows.
Please feel free to misspell my name with impunity. Everybody does, so.
You'd be surprised because the computer misspells it, and I have to go back and correct it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Yeah, Bob is usually spelled right.
That's one's kind of hard to do.
Yeah. I get that one pretty good. Five minutes for public comment. You're the public.
So I don't know if you guys have, well, there's two things. So where are we standing? Are we all set with GMP for the banners?
Nope. They emailed back. They need to know every poll that you want to put something on. There's, the polls are numbered, so we need to get all of the numbers of those polls.
Okay, so somebody had mentioned that either the Legion or the DFW or somebody wanted to also put veterans' pictures up?
I don't know if they're-
Veterans' banners?
I think they, the flags go on.
I know we've already talked about the flag, or you guys have already talked about the flags.
I'm not sure where we are with the-
But I, somebody had mentioned that, and I didn't know if we could do both. Because, I mean, veterans are hugely important to me, and I think they should get all the recognition that-
I don't think we're to that point yet.
You're not?
No.
So we don't have to worry about it? It's not something we worry about?
There's a meeting next Monday, and I'll ask, but I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
I actually asked, I was curious about that. I asked a friend of mine in Whitehall about how that was handled. And apparently, they designate certain polls for the veterans' banners. They're permanent. They never, they don't take them down unless they fall apart. And then there are other polls in the town that are used for kind of temporary or seasonal things. So I don't think, I don't think we could put them, put the, both of them on the same poll.
Yeah, that would be kind of cumbersome.
So I guess my question, since they need to know that, I guess I'll have to bring that to the, to the project graduation. But would you guys, like maybe every other poll, should we keep the graduates up on this side of town? I mean, do you guys have any opinions on that?
I'll tell you, every other poll, because that's how the lights are. So, so you might want to put them under a light.
All right, I'll, I'll bring that up to the meeting on Wednesday, and then at the next meeting, I'll let you know what was decided.
And like I said, I don't think the Legion's anywhere near that yet.
Okay.
But I'll find out for sure in the next, yeah.
The second thing is, Bill's not here. So I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we've had some people be moving into town. They're a little on the, on Couth side. And it's getting kind of scary downtown with these folks. Since it's getting to the point where we close up at 4:30, between like 4:30 and 5:00, depending on finishing up stuff. And I was just maybe thinking, is there any way, because we're not the only ones that get done around that time. If there was any way that perhaps we could have a little bit of a police, let me try that again, a little bit of police presence.
I don't see why not. They probably just do a quick foot patrol around 5:00 or 4:30.
4:30, 5:00, if that would-
It wouldn't hurt to have their face in the crowd anyways for that kind of thing.
I mean, I, this past week, we had an incident with one of the gentlemen. He had his window wide open, and he had his speaker in the window, or very close to the window. And it was projecting a very nasty rap song, and I don't care rap or whatever, but the F-word and the N-word were consistently used blasting out across downtown. And he, the gentleman, was yelling right along with it, out at anybody who was walking by. So.
There's really nothing we can do. Noise in the night doesn't work there because we've had complaints like that before.
Bill, Bill was called. He did go up.
Yeah, here's what we can do is ask.
So, but it's just, it's, it's getting bad, and I'm just quite, I'm, we're really nervous about, you know, having to cross over to where our cars are.
And my, my comment is, may, may not be able to do anything about their music, but if that person is driving an unregistered, uninspected, whatever, you can do something about those. Usually, a bad actor's a bad actor. It's not just one.
Well, yeah, and I mean, the whole idea of those guys, you know, the cops walking down through downtown at that time of day isn't a bad idea anyways. It's just people get to know them, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a bad idea.
I, it's, it's just a bad, this one particular gentleman was arrested for stabbing somebody up north. Was arrested for assaulting a pizza guy, a pizza delivery man, because he asked for the whole amount, not just the $20 the guy wanted to give him. Seriously assaulted him.
I'm sure I'm laughing.
So it's- If we could do that, that would be awesome. And I really feel bad that Bill's not here because I really was planning on asking him before I brought it to you guys, but he's not here. Thanks, guys.
We'll keep that on the front burner.
I know he's shorthanded, and I apologize for trying to put anything else on his plate, but.
Okay. Department head report. If your department head here reports.
Little bit of maintenance, not too much. We got the creek board for two sidewalks and the park for the Hubble Bridge. We just got buttoned up on that, do some cuts and finish grading and stuff. Turned out really nice, really nice, actually. You know, just ditching there on Brooklyn Heights and a couple other little small dirt roads. So we've been fucking away. This time of year, we're going to be switching over to make sure everything works for Barry Sanders and Salters and Chicken Blades and all that good stuff. And we're going to be shutting down, we got a couple other little projects, but we'll be shutting down Playground Two this week, or no, Playground Bathroom, excuse me, that's been getting buttoned up, so.
Encasing it in steel and?
Well, I was just saying, all this money for sales, I know.
Question for Nate?
Were we ever able to fix what was done to it?
The window hasn't been repaired, if that's what you're asking about.
I heard that they had done some really bad, like broke a toilet and all this stuff.
Yeah, it's happened a few times. Obviously, everything is fixed now. The glass is put back in, roll the glass that that rose. So that part's all.
Did we ever find out who did it?
I get the impression that finding, that putting some sort of security measure there, like a camera, would probably be almost as expensive as actually doing the repairs.
Yeah, and the camera that's down there, the, the school has one, but it doesn't really get out to that, where that is. Now, at one point, we talked, talked about moving that for the winter every year, but that's not happening.
I haven't heard of it.
It was when it first came. It kind of went by the wayside.
The winter time ain't the problem, though.
No. Yeah.
But this is summertime usage. It just seems like a problem. The kids are, you know, misusing it and damaging it and throwing rocks through it and ripping the toilets out before.
Other than that, working perfect, right?
Yeah, I mean, it still looks nice anyhow, doesn't it?
Frustrating. Any questions for Nate? No. You have to hook for a few minutes.
No, it's fine, man. It'd be, well, if we donate just the playground and everything to the school, then we wouldn't have to worry about none of that no more.
Just saying.
Just saying.
The answer still is-
The school wants it, so it's kind of.
The answer at the end of the day, though, for me, is that behavior is not acceptable, and passing it on isn't the answer either. We need to fix it. Well, I don't, I don't, it, and if it means better lighting, putting expensive cameras in, but then cuffing and stuffing and putting those vandals away, it's, we got to stop letting that kind of behavior seem to be acceptable. It's not.
It's just, just finding-
We don't agree with you, but.
Nope, but I'm saying, throwing your hands up and just saying we're going to fix it each time, that's not an answer.
But what do you propose that we do?
Better lighting and cameras, and then prosecute the individuals, charge the family of the kids on their taxes for the damage they're being done. That's how you stop it.
Ain't gonna happen.
Well, I, it's, it won't happen if you don't.
There's that, you know, the states, there's statutes that you have.
And I'm not, I-
And you got to be able to prove it, and that's the worst part.
I think the lighting and the cameras are probably a good step, though. If you light it up, it kind of deters people.
They seem, cameras and lighting seem to work as a deterrent and as a tool for identifying and holding people accountable. I'm just saying, we got to hold people accountable and not say we can't. That's not the answer.
You're preaching to the choir here. It's just a question of, you know, what are we talking about in terms of money?
Then we, we, it can't be that outrageously nice.
No, it's not too bad.
That's what I'm, I'm saying.
That actually would cost-
We spent probably more on repair than, than the cameras and the lighting costs.
Those, those prices, we have some of those numbers already, and we'll bring them to the board later in the budget process.
Okay.
Once you do that, maybe it would be worth it to put an article in the Free Press and an article in, you know, the small papers, even Bretton Herald, if you think it would be necessary, about how we are putting in all these security measures so that perhaps the knowledge that we're putting in the security measures might be enough to deter, maybe not the real bad ones, but the ones who are just really bored and looking for something, knowing that, you know, there are security measures. Maybe that might deter them.
Well, the thing is, I mean, the rock through the window, the deck behind, but the problem is during the day when they're ripping the toilets off. The doors are locked, doors aren't ripped open. It's, I'm not blaming anybody, teachers, coaches, or anything like that, but it's happening.
While events are going on.
During the day, so.
It's a bit more frustrating than him.
So, I mean, there is my two cents about that, but.
But I, I think if we, if we're serious about to see something, say something, I got to believe people know who's doing this. They talk.
Sure.
And I think the reason they don't come to us and tell us is because they don't have a whole lot of confidence we'd do anything about it other than it would be their life miserable if they told us. We have to, we have to hold them accountable.
My experience at school is if they know what's happening during the day, somebody's going to do something about it.
Well, the thing is, I mean, you're, you're going to ask the teachers and coaches every time a kid uses the bathroom. Obviously, you can't have cameras inside the bathroom, so what are you going to?
But has anybody told the school?
You're going to have a kid go in there, and after he's done, that when a kid leaves the bathroom, you're going to go in there and check? Just, you know what I mean? I mean, because you can't have cameras in there, so, and you have to physically see the damage and how much.
I know things have changed since I was there, but I know if-
It's almost like you have to have a bathroom monitor there all the while.
Which we're not going to.
I mean, it's probably going to be pretty hard to do.
Well, yeah.
The vast majority of our kids, I think, are good kids who do what needs to be done. The vast majority of our kids, I think, are good kids who do what needs to be done. We need to take care of that small number.
Well, I think lights and, and if cameras are allowed, I hate cameras, but, uh.
Yeah, anyway.
But, lights and, and other protective measures are, should be there. Uh, moving on, you have a couple things for us?
Couple things, you know, I don't have a report from the police chief this time around.
I didn't.
He's, he's here, I don't, uh, maybe he'll be stopping in later.
I thought we got something, yeah, we got some, uh, oh, no, no, it's ten seventeen, this is my old one.
From, uh, from my office at least, we talked a little bit about, um, flaggers. Carrie from the wastewater plant organized a flagger training for staff, I think that was last Friday, so, or maybe two Fridays ago.
Oh, last Friday.
Yeah, so thank you for.
What kind of training?
Flagger.
Oh.
Three hundred, Benson, Joe Benson, come, hang on for you.
So, I, I reported out earlier today that we were doing hydrant flushing, which was not true, we were doing sewer flushing last week. Transfer station permit, that this is the permit that comes up every ten years, that's been submitted to the state, and that permit is requesting the, uh, the demo pad be open backup. We'll find out about that later this year, we submitted that about two months early, so, we'll, we'll hear more from them later. Uh, land sale, I've started that process for the land sale, the, the, or the, the people that won those bids were notified. We're running the ad in the paper that'll come out Friday, and the, um, notice was posted around town, so, after, thirty days after Friday, we'll be able to finalize those transfers. Uh, we've interviewed, we've been interviewing, so we had three, uh, two interviews for the account position, there's one more on Wednesday. We've interviewed three people for the equipment operator position, and there was a second interview with one of those gentlemen today. Uh, we, we believe we'll make an offer to that gentleman tomorrow.
Uh, Joe, what time is the interview on Wednesday? Do you know if, and?
Three P M. Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't sent it to you yet, no.
Uh, I guess I'll have to ask for it, I know that I have agreed to sit in on them, but unfortunately, I'm going to be somewhere at three o'clock. If any other of the support members can sit in, I would really appreciate it.
Do you want me to try to move it?
Yeah, uh, no, 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 this isn't, no, this isn't, we, we need to get this done, so, I mean, I'm just saying that anyone else who can appear at three o'clock on, um.
I'll be there Wednesday.
Richard, are you working at three o'clock on Wednesday?
I, I'm saying yes, but I may be able to sneak away if you need somebody.
I'm not sure, I have to think Wednesday, yeah.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure y'all can work with Joe and figure it out, but I just, I don't, I don't wanna delay.
Yeah, well, we don't wanna have more than, more than two there.
We can't, we can't have one.
You run into.
Right, and I, I know, I know that we're, we're kind of, you know, actively trying to get this position filled, so I don't wanna delay it because of my schedule, so.
Bear with me for a minute, let me see. I'm just reading through, there's really not a ton. Um, park fence, I did my test run on one of those rails for the park fence, it turned out pretty good. Um, so I'm gonna start pulling those rails down and painting those over the winter. If anybody's interested and would like to paint a few rails for, on the park fence, uh, let me know, I'll, I'll pull them down and I'll run them right to your house. Just, uh, let me know how many and when. It actually, it's not too bad, a little scraper, I put a little sand on it to do just a little bit more, but, um, it's not, it's not hard work.
I'll do some for you.
I will do some, I just don't know where I'm gonna do them yet.
I don't have the space, in the living room, my wife would frown on that on the carpet, so.
You can come in my garage.
I can't even clean my gun in my own living room.
Uh, and the last, the last thing, uh, before Aaron left, he, he received a grant from the Lake Champlain Basin, L C B P program, Lake Champlain Basin program, uh, forty-five thousand to buy a salt brine machine. This grant, we just do not have staff to manage this project, there's, there's, nobody has time. Um, I asked Jim what extra time he had, and now that I have him up here working at, uh, helping with the accounting position, he has no time. So, what I'm asking the board, uh, is, should we, I'm, I'm asking, should we return?
So, we have the machine?
No.
Oh, then.
We haven't done any work on the grant because we just don't have.
And, and we're not interested, interested in brine?
We do got a homemade maker at the garage, homemade one, this is, uh, I read just a little bit about it, so I don't know too much information about it, but this grant was, um, is to buy a more, to buy a machine, not a homemade one like we got, it's like a real, it does the job it's supposed to do.
So, what's your recommendation on this, send it back or?
We, we just don't have the people to do it, I just literally don't have staff to do this. I, what I would need is a body, I would need somebody to manage a grant.
Can this be moved to any other machinery, or is it simply for this purpose only?
No.
Yeah, it's just for.
It's, I, I, I'm kinda reading between the lines here from what I'm hearing. It's getting, it's doing the paperwork to receive this machine is where you need help.
Well, yeah, that, but it's also following the process, it's quarterly reports, it's, uh, it's making the purchase, it's, you know, submitting the paperwork, it's, 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 it's not just give me money, buy, buy a machine, it's give me money, report, 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 buy copies, it's, it's hours, hours and hours worth of work.
After we repair the machine and put it into service, there's still reports that has to be filed.
It'd be at least a year's worth of reports.
Really?
And is brine, all that effort and a person, do we do that much brine that it's worth what we're going to spend to get it? That's all I, I, is it a key, is it a key part of our?
How much is the grant?
We've been using brine, yes, the last, uh, last year was, the first year we used brine, but we've been using liquid, that coal melt for last four years now, so liquid is a big part of our tat, for winter now, we try to cut down on salt and use of all that.
How much, how much are we paying for that, uh, that solution?
She did brine, put it, putting it down ahead of time, starts the, the processes melting off the roads way sooner, pulls the salt on there way better.
It's a really good system, uh, Massachusetts uses it, and their roads are black, you know, they're, they're, they're just bad.
It ends up being le- less cost, less salt used in the long run.
But you gotta have, you gotta have the people.
But if we didn't do this grant, we'd still be using brine as part of our process, but we'd be doing it the way we did it last year.
Yeah, the, the five gallon ale makes it in the drums.
Right, I'm, I'm, and, and that's all, I'm, I'm just looking at saying, if we don't have the, the manpower and the money, may go back and look at something down the road, but I'm trying to understand.
You should go down, you should go down and see their homemade machines.
Well, I, I've seen their homemade machine, but I'm just going, that's, uh.
It's pretty, I mean, a new, uh, the state of the art one that's made for it will definitely be way more efficient, no question.
No, no question, but we, we spent so much money on trucks and everything, I, I, right now, I'd be, take that.
Is there a match?
Send, send that grant back.
Um, it's, it's typically twenty percent, uh, which would be nine thousand dollars, um, yeah.
What's, what's everybody feeling?
Well, if we don't have the help, I don't know how you're gonna do it, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
How much time would it save you if you had the machine? If.
That machine, depends on what model, um, it saves quite a bit of time, because the, the newer ones, now you just, as long as you got your water hookup and all that, it, you just dump it, dial it in for your twenty-three point three, and it just does it itself. Like here, we got a, like baby set, because like I said, it's a homemade machine and stuff like that.
See, now they have a pump circulation system, they have a pump that's running outside pumping water through it.
But, but it's not.
Where this machine would do it all within itself.
But it's not, my, my understanding, the question isn't buying the machine, it's having a person who's gonna manage the program. That person manages programs, not putting the salt down, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I, we're at, we've, we've beefed up our D P W with the number, we've, with, with getting the person we're bringing on board, add one more on top, it'd, it'd be great for folks.
Or we're replacing a guy, I mean, not, I mean, not.
Right, it's, it's replacing that who, who, uh, with a different position, I, I get that, but I'm just going.
I think my, my thinking is really, any sort of reporting is gonna be done with information that you would have in the brining process. Um, is there, is there a way to, I mean, if you're gonna save some time, can you collect data and kind of essentially get the bulk of that information done and save time in the process, so that the reporting is minimized from, from an administrative standpoint?
I mean, I think this goes into a larger issue, which is, we've talked a number of times about how, um, when Liz was here, um, you know, Joe and Liz were, you know, had too much work to deal with, and it was making it difficult for them to administer any of the grants. Um, I think that as long as we are going to be administering grants, period, I think that perhaps we should see if there is a way where we could have someone else help us, not only, and I think that that would not only allow us to keep the brining, the machine, uh, you know, as a concept, but also, you know, take, you know, work off these people. The one thing I'm concerned about is I don't want a new person to come in, and I know that Joe's been working very hard on this, I don't want a new person to come in and suddenly be overwhelmed with, with work, and then, you know, possibly, you know, screwing up that relationship from the beginning, so, um, I think it's something we probably need to think about at the same time. Joe, when, when do we have to respond to this grant, is it something that's very time sensitive or?
Uh, she, she sent me an email last week saying, you know, hey, I really need this, this information to move forward. And, and honestly, I've been just thinking, I'll do it myself, and then kicking the can and kicking the can and kicking the can, but there's just.
Which is unfair to you.
Well, I don't wanna mess that up and then drop the ball somewhere else, and I've been trying, but I just, I can't. And I tried to pass it, pass it on to Jim, but again, we moved him up here, so.
The, I, is there a possibility of deferring that grant for a year? So we can, so we can budget and see what our budget looks like? Yeah, another, another person in here, an accountant hired, we may be able to, be able to juggle this, and then we, we have a, a time saver down there. I mean, it's worth asking if they can just.
Yeah, let me, let me, because they give you grant extensions, right? That's typically on the backside, but I can see if they'll give me some on the front side, that might be an option.
It's the staff, it's that individual, and would, that, that person we talked about, that fifty percent of the time at recreation, twenty-five percent of the time, um, grant support, would that cover this, or are you saying it would take a, more than twenty-five percent of a person's?
Oh, it shouldn't even take the whole twenty-five percent of a person's time.
If we, we may, it may become a moot point if we're talking and we come up with a, this other position, and a piece of it is, then we can go ahead and say, fine, bring.
What I'm, what I'm also thinking is maybe we need to determine what the time commitment would be for someone to manage all the grants we currently have. Because, I mean, if it's a matter of, okay, someone working ten hours a week can do it, that's one thing, if it's set, you're saying, oh, it's a full-time forty-hour a week job, that's something entirely different, so I think that we, if, if maybe, Joe, at some point, you could kind of estimate how much, you know, time you, you and, and the accountant are spending managing the grants, then that, I think, will probably provide us with a better perspective on what we really need.
I must even have that information, I'll, I'll pull it for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
So, so that guy there, I'm holding on to that grant, to find out if we can defer it, and if not.
If not, we'll talk about it the next meeting. Kick it down the, you kick it down the.
Kick it down the road a little further.
Just a quick question, if we let this grant go at this present time, and in a year or so reapply, I don't think that would hurt us any, do you?
Uh, they don't like it if you return money, but I, I feel like we could make a case that, hey, you know, we lost our director and we were short-staffed.
Well, you're not really returning the money, we haven't got it yet, right?
Well, we've won the award, so it's been allocated to us, they can't give it to somebody else.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Well, if we've gotten that far, then maybe we really should do what we can to make sure we keep it.
Yeah, let's see if we can defer it for a year, though, I mean, if we can't, then we gotta make a decision next, next, next time, and, and we got some, we'll have some more information as far as time. Nate, if you can figure out what you spend on, you know, that's difficult, it's, it depends on how many storms you have right now, yeah, I get it. What else you got?
Last thing, this is kind of fun, so Santa is still coming on November twenty-fifth.
On November twenty.
To, to the park.
According to Facebook, Santa's never come.
I know, so I personally know that Santa was here last year, and I know that there was an elf too.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought it would be fun, I, I guess this guy got a, a head of steam of its own. I thought it would be fun if we actually warned a meeting and have the select board come and, and welcome Santa, you know, if you guys bring your top hats out and speak in, you know, high English. That would be great, yeah.
Have we, have we properly vetted either Santa or the elf, I mean, do any background checks here?
No background checks, and I can tell you, they're, they're very professional, the Santa. Yep, so, uh, I didn't know if the board wanted to do that or not, but I thought it would be fun.
It'd be fun.
It'd be fun, yeah.
What is it?
November twenty-fifth.
Which is the day after Thanksgiving.
Day after Thanksgiving, I think it's Friday.
I won't be here.
November, it's a Sat, well, we met, no, it's Saturday, it's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday?
Yeah, when I look at the calendar over there.
November twenty-fifth.
Is a Saturday, right?
The twenty-third is Thanksgiving.
Twenty-third is Thanksgiving, when I look at that, yeah.
Oh, maybe I will be here.
But, uh.
I'll be at camp.
Can't guarantee the top hat, but I, I'll, I'll be there. I'll see, let's, don't know, don't know if we have one of those.
Fancy sashes and.
Oh, my gosh, we need to get sashes, I'll work on it, okay, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Halloween is tomorrow.
I, I'll skip the sashes, I don't know if you've seen the official chains that legislators in England and Canada wear.
The big, the big bling.
Yeah, exactly, that would.
That'd be nice. Okay, anything else, any, any questions for the town manager that need to be asked now? All right, highway signs, again.
Yeah, the state, the state came back, this is that big highway sign over on, uh, North Main, between North Main and Dutton. They came back and they said, are you really, really sure you wanna leave that, um, sign structure up? And my response was yes, but then I thought, I didn't, I wanted to give you guys a second chance, because they asked me, were you really, really sure?
Well, I mean, are we putting, are we going to replace the sign that's there, or are we just gonna leave that?
Yeah, they gave you an example.
They're proposing some smaller signs on the sides, so, I wish they would kind of explain what their thinking is. I'm for leaving it, but somewhere along the line, I'm thinking that this is gonna be a hassle for them.
That's why they want it gone, I think, is because it's a hassle.
In what sense?
Probably, probably not gonna fit into what they plan on doing. But I wish, I wish.
There's probably a certain amount of maintenance to that, that they have to take care of.
I just, I wish they, I wish we had a little more information, I mean, I'm, I'm the one, I'm one of the fellows that thought we should leave it, but I'm willing to think about this.
I think it's all good and handle.
We still, I really don't like it.
If they got a really better idea to improve this area, and this would help them by the voting, you know?
They'll take that down and put a sign there.
Yeah, I assume this is what they wanna go, Four Eastern, Four.
Yeah.
Hey, this way, they're gonna have that by the storage.
Well, they're gonna put it on that corner where Peter's, I don't know who owns it.
Well, it shows right here on that, between the fire here and there.
Yeah.
And I assume on the opposite side, going toward the castle, that'll be the same thing.
Yeah.
And this, this here is, this is already in place down here on the hill. Just, just to give us an idea of what.
They're gonna say, Joe, if, if we opt to keep that structure, will they refuse to update the signs, or are they?
They, no, not at all, they haven't said that at all. I, I think the reason they're hedging is because they don't wanna put up those big signs. They wanna put up the little signs, and that's easy. I think that's what the issue is.
And as, and as a landlord, I disagree with you, Bob. I, I have one of these in front of my house, one of these smaller signs. They're, they usually are half-bent over, look like heck, and they're pain to, to work around. Uh, if I owned this house right here and you wanted to put some of them garbage little signs up there, I wouldn't have any say about it, but I wouldn't be happy either. I'd be out weed-eating around them and everything.
I got three on my property.
Well, like I said, I.
Well, between, between accidents and subsistence and everything else, they're, they're not gonna last as long as a, as a superstructure like that.
These chintzy things usually look, the one they're using in the example is even bent, uh, on the side. They're, they're, again, I, I come back and I don't understand why they didn't understand it when we said the first time.
Well, I think, I think there's something more to it.
Well, I, they're probably trying to get away from the maintenance.
We're, we're assuming all of that, though, and can we, before we change, we're assuming that they think it's gotta go, and it could be no typical Montpelier, V-Trans that ask, ask, ask again, like we did down the corner, and get everyone spinning their wheels.
Save, save us money. It's like, we just want, want you to save us money.
And, and you, you look at that there, and I thought your idea of putting a banner on them, don't care if they don't wanna put big signs up there, uh, or not, is that something that you wanna use to put things on? I thought you're, and if they're saying they can't do the paving, and I find it, if they're gonna go and wipe out those, the, the Route Four paving when they change the, that intersection, if, if they're saying that's why they want the thing out, I don't think so. I think we're building more into this than we need to. I think, I, personally, I think you go back and, and find out if there isn't a reason. For me, the reason is, they'd say, look, we'll either tear it down now, or come back and tell you to tear it down, and you'll pay for it. That's enough reason to get me back on the other side and say, take it down, but I haven't heard them say that.
Sure.
That's all.
Here's what I'd say, that looks like something out of, uh, pardon the, uh, reference, but something out of a Florida city.
I, I like that sign.
Piece of crap. It looks like a billboard to me, it's uglier than, than you could imagine, and I hate it. It looks far more urban than, than what it's called.
Kind of order, Bob, there is, that's too small for Florida.
Any large city can.
Yes.
Route seventeen in New Jersey.
There you go.
They're, they're saying that's our sign, not theirs.
The structure is ours.
The structure is ours.
Let me ask, let me ask. These smaller signs, if they get knocked over, is it those folks, their sign crew that's gonna replace them, or is it our sign?
No, it's their, it's the state.
They, they take them.
We'll, we'll wait out here. Those are our signs. Once they put it up there.
Signs on.
They maintain the ones of mine.
It, no, it, it depends, I agree with you, it depends on where you are.
Signs that are in the town limit, even the ones in front of your house, or town for Havens.
Now, the one in front of my house, because it was tipped half-over, and the reason, because Town Fairhaven doesn't plow my main road, the state does, and it was their sign, and it practically, practically laid in the road for a couple of years before they finally got around to straightening it up and putting the thing up from V-Trans. That's why I'm not a big fan of those, those chintzy.
Let's find out if there, if there's some charge involved, and.
But, I, I think.
Let's not beat this, if, if not, we're gonna keep it, I guess.
And may I recommend, Glenn, that you use term, a term other than chintzy, because people, people of a certain age have no idea what that is.
Oh, yeah, they don't know.
I, I do.
I, I use the example of the license plates that you can't read, that they didn't, for some reason, really put the right paint on, that you're seeing all, all over the place, and, yeah.
Was that here? I thought it was, I, I know it was in Ontario, they did that.
Just, just pay attention to the ones driving around on the road, that they're probably just barely getting through inspection, cause you can't read it.
So what, what am I asking V-Trans, though?
Unless they're saying.
And what's my responsibility?
If there's any, any cost to us, if that, if not, we're gonna keep it as is.
Seems like it would be easier when they come in to do the project, if they weren't messing around with that. Now, if it's in their way, tell us it's in your way, and we, we'll work with it, but I, I haven't heard a reason why you'd tear it down.
I think no other real reason, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Ugly.
I'm sure it's, well, I'm, I'm sure it's, 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 it all comes back to money. It's, it's cheaper, it's cheaper for V-Trans to put these tiny little lollipop signs up than it is to.
And then.
Right, and those, those signs.
Our responsibility.
Those big signs, like, on the structure and on the highway, those are extremely expensive to produce, so that's probably it. They will, I mean, a brand-new sign, like the, the ones on, uh, the, the ones on the new road will put up in twenty-twenty-two, uh, and they're probably, they have like a life of about fifteen to twenty years, if they're, if, you know, nothing, no accidents or anything, obviously. But, yeah, it's, if they're, they're there for the long term. I even, do you have any idea how old the sign that's there is?
No.
I looked at the, well, if you look at the fonts, you can tell from the fonts, those are probably twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, I, I bet it probably came the same time we got the blinking light. Which was the, which was the early seventies, cause I was in high school when that came.
Was that the same timeframe?
It was, it was replaced.
The highway put in?
Yeah, actually, around the same time, yeah.
So we're talking fifty years.
Almost, yeah, yeah.
Just a quick, you know, um, we're talking about street signs, but I, where they've done the speed limit down to twenty-five over on Fourth Street. They never took the speed limit, the thirty mile-an-hour speed limit sign out from in the middle of those two. Just, just saying, I happened to notice that the other day.
Isn't it a thirty except for certain times?
It's only twenty-five miles an hour from.
I can see the confusion, though, cause I was confused.
Seven-thirty, eight-thirty, and two-thirty to three-thirty, it's thirty miles an hour the rest of the time. That's, that's, that's the logic they, I've, I've been.
Goes only down to twenty-five? Actually, I thought those would go down to fifteen during one of the school zone.
No, it's twenty, twenty-five.
It's, it's twenty-five from Heritage Family, um, through about halfway down the street.
Right.
And then right in the middle of those two is the thirty mile-an-hour sign.
Like Chad was saying, it's, it's only a certain time of day, it's twenty-five during school, so that's probably why that's, but, but it is confusing.
It's confusing.
So I asked the chief about this, cause I saw, I heard, I don't, I don't look at Facebook, I don't govern by Facebook.
Good thing.
It's, I mean, who do you, who do you, who do you listen to, the people that like the twenty-five mile-an-hour sign and the people that don't? That's why I don't go to Facebook. So, if you look at the sign, it has numbers underneath, it has times, and it says twenty-five.
I didn't, obviously didn't notice that.
Yeah, so twenty-five miles an hour between such time and such time, which is school time.
Okay.
Um, I talked to the chief about this, because I did hear that there was confusion, and the chief said, that's the ordinance. You don't change the signs unless you change the ordinance, so that's twenty-five miles is there, thirty miles is there, it's, the world continues to turn.
You got the direction you need for the highway signs, correct? All right, let us move on. Um, the water sewer connection permits for a couple of places.
Yes, we had Moore's Auto and Manufactured Homes bought a lot down on, um, Fairhaven Avenue. They split that lot in half, and they'll be putting, there is an existing, uh, mobile home there. Uh, but on the other lot, they're adding a mobile home, so they're gonna connect to that, and then they're gonna need water and sewer for that as well. So, all total, one, the existing unit has a total fee of eighty dollars for the application and recording fee. Um, and then the new unit, that has a total fee of one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, and that's, you know, the connection and the one-time fee and, everything that goes with that. So, I have, so there's two here for the board to sign, for, uh, the chair to sign.
So you're looking, you're looking for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the water sewer connection for Moore's Manufacturing Homes, uh, for installing two units on Fairhaven Avenue to be signed by the chair.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Chad second, Jason.
Just put in there a huskier man with a beard, seconded.
Over there.
Over, over there.
Okay. Timing is impeccable, Cindy. That is Cindy underneath that hat.
Chipper tree.
Hey, tis the season, right?
Are you gonna have candy in your shop?
Uh, not, I'm close tomorrow, but, um, I'm giving out candy at the house, and we're on Second Street, so we'll be crazy and excited.
All right, so the planning commission is gonna present the select board our draft of new zoning regs. And all we're going to do is present them to you, give you an overview, uh, and chime in where I feel. One thing I should mention, and I'm glad you're here, Cindy, when I got on the board, they were starting, they were start, on the zoning board, they were starting to update the zoning regs. And what Cindy did was go back to two thousand and ten and look at every motion ever made in the planning commission, in the, in the records of the planning commissions, and make sure that it was implemented in the, uh, in the zoning regs before we did anything else. It was an incredible amount of work, I mean, it, you really, it's, I was flabbergasted by the amount of work that, that was. It, you should be thanked for that, that was publicly, that was a brutal, brutal job. It really was, I, you know, and it was so complicated, cause you really, you look at a, a motion that was made, and then you had to go find the, and look and see, and some of them were very vague and very, very, possibly they made it, possibly it wasn't a motion, there was a lot of discussion. I'm glad you did that, not me. Um, so you all have copies of the, of the draft, this is for you guys to peruse and look, look through and see what jumps out at you. You'll, you'll see that some, a lot of, a lot of the changes have to do with housing and parking and, which is a, a push that the state is going, and I'll talk about, um, state mandates afterwards. So, um, if you go to, I think it's page seventeen, and then I'll, I won't take much time. Cindy, chime in anytime, please. But some of the, some of the char, some of the things we did to make the town more business-friendly, for instance, was lower the size of a business lot, the square footage of a business lot, from, I think it was twenty thousand down to sixty, or forty thousand. No, I resonate, um, commercial was an industry, I guess it was forty thousand across the board, we lowered it to sixty, sixty-five hundred and twenty. So that's, it's considerably smaller lot to put a business in, but it, it should be, it should be conducive for business. The people who, you know, that don't need forty thousand square feet can come in and make, make themselves a place, and, and one of the concerns was there wouldn't be enough room for a business. Well, nobody, nobody is gonna buy a, a plot that's too small for their business. And you gotta depend on the businessperson to know that. So we got it down to a minimum lower there, I think that's a, a real good, you'll see some of those other changes like that. We changed, uh, a lot of definitions, and we've got a lot more to change, believe it or not.
It's, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, we're trying to make it a lot, um, easier and friendlier for people coming into town, and also just try to align it with the town plan, um, to make them kind of mesh together a little bit. So, we're quite proud of that thing.
It's, there's a lot of.
It took a long time to get it done.
Yeah. And, you know, the, the regional, regional planning commission helped a lot in, in navigating the state mandates. The problem we had was that there, well, it isn't a problem, it's just that in the, in the transition from the fellow that was there to the new fellow, the new guy found some other state mandates that we didn't, uh, that we didn't put in there. But we got a, we got a ruling from the state that says that we, we as select board can add those mandates, and they are mandated. That they're not something we can discuss, that they, so you've got a copy of that, that's a small insert. So when we get ready, when you guys, when we all get ready to adopt the zoning regs, um, we'll make a motion to, to, uh, add this, add these in the specific places that they go. Um, and it's okay to do that. The other alternative was for this, was for the planning commission to go back, add them, and have our two, um, um, public hearings, uh, again, all over again, and that's not necessary. You guys, I'm, I'm speaking to you guys, cause I'm on the planning commission right now. We have the opportunity to add them in our part of the, our part of the discussion of zoning regs, and, um, we will do that at, at a meeting before we set up for a, uh, for a public hearing that has to happen from us. And then they will be official after the public hearing and the waiting period. So I would, I would ask you to go through, go through there, see if anything jumps out that scares you. There's some parking, we lowered some, some of the, uh, some of the restrictions on parking, not as much as, as was suggested by, by the Rutland Regional, but a little bit here and there.
What we felt would work for our town.
Right.
Basically, we took their recommendations, the state recommendations, and just kind of made it so it fit Town Fairhaven, so that way it's, it's not quite a culture shock.
Is Rutland Regional gonna, going to, um, you know, peruse this once we're done, or?
They already have.
They already have?
Yeah.
Okay, as, as it stands on the draft.
As it stands in this draft, and with these additions, we are state compliant and comfortable in the regional plan.
I guess more properly, the question is, if we change anything, then they will review that, that.
Yes, they, yeah, so if you find anything in there that, that is, all we do is just tell them, they'll say yea or nay. Uh, if it, the only thing that, that would even possibly happen is if it didn't comply, or it didn't agree with the, with the regional plan. However, theirs is, their plan is starting, they're gonna do theirs, uh, starting, I guess they're starting with it already. But, uh, so, I don't know if there's any questions, I, I.
Go ahead.
So, when I look at this here, most of this, it's definition stuff, this is going in. On page two or table one, table of uses, it looked like there were two options, will you be looking for us as a board to give you feedback as to which one of those two?
Which one you're comfortable with.
You would like, okay.
There's a couple, there's, I think there's two that there are options, at least that one, and then I thought there was one more.
I didn't see options anywhere else.
Oh, no, no, no action needed, okay. No, so it's just that one.
Just that one there that you're looking for.
Whichever, it gives a little bit of a discussion as to why and what the reasoning's for are, but they are, it's not that we, we've gotta have one of the two options, because they're state mandated. This, everything in these two pages are state mandated, and they have to be in our regs. And, um, so, the new guy was fine-toothing it and found a couple of things that needed to go in, so.
One, one other question? So would, would it make sense, timing-wise, cause we probably wanted this done yesterday, like, like everything else, but timing-wise, would, would, are you looking for like our, our next? Uh, but timing wise, would, would, are you looking for like our, our next meeting?
I don't think it's necessary to be, I, I would like, what do you think Cindy, the end of the year, by, you know?
I would say definitely by the end of the year. Um, it has to be in effect, I think by what, June of next year or something?
The, the town plan has to be, and I think they have to coincide.
Yeah, something like that, something-
So, and, and the only reason I asked, of course, I didn't know if this had to be done before you could start the town plan, or you could-
Oh, no.
Okay.
We're already into the town.
We're already into the town plan.
So, you'll be coming, it's really, just tell us what you need, what's the timing?
What we need now is, we need you guys to look, look through it. We need to, at that point, you need to set, um, what you, what would happen was, we'd set this up on the, on the agenda to have a discussion for any, anything that strikes you as off the wall. Um, at that point, we would adopt these, these regulations, these mandates into the, into the draft. And then you would set a town, um, um, public hearing.
Yeah.
And the public hearing, and after the public hearing, there's a certain, I think it's forty-five days or whatever it is, and then it's, uh-
So, and, and so that would be, I know the town plan runs out the end of June, twenty twenty-four. When does this run out, or does it run out?
My understanding is, is there's any cost to it, isn't there?
Yeah, I, but I don't think, I, I think it's, they're comfortable, they're comfortable as long as we're doing it, as long as we're this far, they're not worried about a, a timeframe.
Okay.
They're more worried that we've finished the job. And I think, I, and I say forty-five days, I don't know if that's the right number, it might be fifteen, uh, after, after the town hearing.
So when we get together and we, we put these in, agree on this, there's one or two information meetings? One information meeting?
Yep.
And then, it goes into a five to show me this?
Fifteen day waiting, or thirty day, or forty-five?
And I think at that point, after you adopt it, does it go back to the regional again? For them to do a final review on that?
I think, once we adopt it, they'll look at it again.
They'll look at that.
But it's not, is, their suggestions are already in this.
Right.
So there's not anything that's outrageously, unless we change something,
Okay.
You know, that, that you feel is desperately off, off.
And Logan, is his name over there?
Yeah.
He was very thorough, and he came back with some pages of, hey, this is what we gotta do, this is what we, needs we change, or whatever. So, I feel pretty confident you guys are gonna like this, and-
Yeah, Ed, Ed was, Ed helped us through the first part of it. And then he's got done, and I think when he got done, he got done, and then Logan went, ooh, state mandates and saw some other things. Ed had given us a bunch of that already, but maybe just missed a couple or something like that.
That's what I'm thinking.
And a new kid wanted to put his stamp on it anyway, so.
He's been talking, I'll say that.
Yeah, he's, he's good at what he does.
Good.
Although he was supposed to deliver me some more of these, and he didn't. Yet, he will at some point. I didn't remind him, so I guess he got part of the flow. Anyway, so maybe two meetings from now, we get together and, and do that dance?
I won't be here, I'm gonna miss-
Oh, you're going to make it, right?
I get one more meeting, two meetings, that's why I was trying to get an idea of the meeting. I won't be, I'm gonna miss the, the meeting, uh, two meetings from now.
So that's, uh-
Twenty-first.
Fifteen?
But that does, you don't need to hold up on my part, I could give my input to-
If you, if that works.
Anyone, if that's where it worked out. You just tell me what you want.
What's, let's see, the, well, actually, the twenty-ninth would be two meetings, right?
So the next meeting is the fourteenth?
Fourteenth. And the, oh, I'm, okay, I'm looking at wins, sorry. Yeah. Let's say the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth will work.
And we'll, uh, we'll spend, you know, should be, should be warned that it's gonna be that, that we're gonna adopt the zoning regs. And, and then we'll warn, then, then we warn a public meeting. And we get this thing, get that off the table and work on the town plan and, and, and the, uh-
It'll be good for a couple of days.
The zoning commissioners.
Put their head back, and starts, take a break.
That's right.
Cindy, Cindy cannot, I tell you, believe me, that process before was true. I'll never forget that. It was a lot of work.
So if you, if we have the discussion on the twenty-eighth, I forget how long a public hearing is, but I have to warn that like a week in advance.
Yeah.
So, do, would you wanna have a public hearing on the twelfth before the, the board meeting in December?
We've done that before, and I don't think that'd be a problem.
That would get us done by ten or one, I'm just, yeah, I like that.
And just looking at the calendar to throw something outside you, December twenty-sixth is a board meeting.
Yeah.
Is meeting after Christmas, okay?
They propose that we give ourselves a day off. I love that. In the spirit of the holidays. Well, let's, let's hold that off and see where we are with the budget.
There you go.
Let's plan on the twelfth.
Twenty-eighth for the first discussion, twelfth for the public hearing.
Yeah. If that gives you enough time, I'll-
It's a plan, we can always adjust, but now you have a plan.
That's right. We have a timeline.
Good.
Alright.
Good stuff, thank you very much.
Any other questions you can ask any of us, and we should, should be able to give you an answer, or muddle, or muddle through, we'll find it, we'll find the answer. But it's, it's gonna be nice, this, that we're to that point.
It's a good feeling.
And then the town plan will be the next struggle. Okay. Let's, let's move on then. Alright. So the DPW budget, you're back up Nate. You wanna hit the highlights, or how do you wanna go about this?
Uh, I can, yeah, I can talk a little bit about it. Um, so some of the things that'll jump out, uh, some of the things that would jump out at me, I'll say it like that. Um, on the first page, you see Public Works Admin salary, that was reduced by seventy-two percent. We took the supervisor position, which was Aaron Kerber's position, we eliminated that. Um, what's left is, uh, Jim Heller's salary for DPW. We moved that fifty-four thousand, some of that fifty-four thousand into other line items, so we could hire that second Rustabout. Um, and you'll see a large increase under, uh, for example, summer, summer work salary, which you see a thirty-eight percent increase. Um, winter work salary is also up forty-two percent. And those are the ones that jump out, and that's, those are the ones that jump out. And that's because we have, we took that admin salary and broke it up and put it into labor. So it's not that they were spending that much more, it's just we moved where we were putting our, uh, our salaries. If you, I think everybody has copies, color copies, if it's something in red, that's something that I cut. And I think those are the highlights. So, something, just to touch on labor again, something we always struggle with, um, is, well, why is, why is this salary number twenty percent up while that salary number is seventeen percent down, or whatever the case may be? Um, and that's because, the, the technical term is regressing to the mean, so we take the averages over so many years, pile that together, and then it's about the average of what we expect to use in that, in that category. This year it's a little screwy because we added the, the other Rustabout to it. But the goal is to get as close as we can in those categories to what we're actually gonna spend. And we anticipate that, we estimate that by using past experience. So the numbers seem funny, it's, it's just the averages, is what it boils down to. And this, in this sheet here that, um, I handed out, this shows everybody's labor costs, the total of labor, and then you'll see how that breaks down into the different line, department line items. Um, there is, it's five dollars off, it's because I wrote, I don't like to have those pennies in there.
Having said that, we can go, uh, line by line, if anybody has anything they wanna question. This is the first run-through, so nothing set in stone, I would assume, but, um, I'm gonna start right at the top of Public Works Admin, yeah.
Send that one over to Dan.
I'm gonna, Public Works Admin, has anybody got anything? If not, I'm moving down.
No, Joe, you answered that you took that out, you, you reduced it down to twenty thousand and added to the winter and summer, and, but the twenty thousand that's there for, was left because?
That's Jim Heller's salary.
And that's the breakdown of what's, so that, the admin was, was more than just Aaron's salary? It was Jim Heller and Aaron?
Yes.
I'm just, I was just trying to figure out the twenty thousand was a pretty good piece of change, I just, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to Summer Work. Try to stop me. Anything, John told you?
Before we jump into Summer Work, how many grants are related to DPW that an administrator would oversee?
So it would be, um, Class One paving is always, always comes out of DPW, and Jim always does that, which we haven't got that in a few years, but that would be the management there. I don't think, I don't think they have any at the moment, but they do, they do pop up. Aaron, uh, Aaron managed some grants while he was here.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're accounting for, like, the, the, the human resources around managing the grants and the admin.
Well, what we're, so when I look at that twenty thousand, I like your line of thinking, that if we get our Class Two?
Class Two paving.
On Scott Hill, there'll be some management going with that, probably.
There would have to be, yeah.
And you, the last one we had, wasn't it, when we did Sheldon, the ditching and the cul, all the stuff? Was that a highway grant? There's, there was, I thought there was quite a bit of admin work. When you do your ditches and put that big stone-
Absolutely, I forgot that Rancenade, we get that every year.
And so that, that one still would be, so we're saying probably culvert sand, hopefully we get the Scott Hill paving, and that's probably the bulk of that twenty thousand that's sitting there, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, I'm gonna try again. Summer Work?
Looking at the middle of that, uh, it was more of, uh, just, just for clarification, on O thirty, fifty-one, ten, twenty-two, repair and maintenance supplies. And the note said mower and small engine repair. Is the mower that, that, is that for us to lease the roadside mowing that we do twice? Or, because when I say the mower, we bought a new mower, uh, so I'm just, I'm just, if it, if it was to pay for our two times of doing roadside mowing, I'm going, okay, I understand what that, that is? Or is it something different? I don't wanna make a bad assumption on that. It looks like we had to budget it for twenty-four was five thousand, that doubled to ten thousand. I can see we, our actual for twenty-three was ten thousand, but I, I, is that so that we can rent the mower to do roadside mowing is the bulk of that, or not? Or is that, 'cause, 'cause I'm saying, we bought, didn't we go out and buy a new?
That's repair and maintenance.
Scag, didn't, uh, uh, didn't we go out and, yeah, but that's what I'm saying. We went out and bought a new scag mower, so what are we, what are we repairing?
Uh, it's, it's literally, that's, we, I left that as ten thousand dollars because we spent eleven thousand dollars in just small equipment repair.
But with the new equipment we brought in, we're expecting to spend that again. I, I, I mean, I'm just trying to put the numbers.
You said the reddish, what you took out, you took ten thousand out?
No, no, that's what's left, Rich. I did change that number.
Oh, but ten thousand left?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, I, I'm, again, I was just trying, we, when we buy new mowers and stuff, I, and I see other, like the new trucks and different things, we went down, I'm just trying to understand, it's still, we were, the budgeted in twenty-three was three thousand, we budgeted in twenty-four, five thousand, this thing going to ten thousand, that's, those are pretty good jumps. And I thought we, I, I, I didn't know if we were making, if we didn't take into account the new, I know we bought a mower for Festus and we, go ahead.
The line item, or is it?
It's the line item for repair and maintenance, it's, it's zero thirty, fifty-one, ten, dash twenty-two point zero. Repair and maintenance supplies.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And it says in the notes to the right, mower and small equipment repair.
And we, we, we don't have just one mower.
I know, I know, we have multiple, we have multiple, but we bought new stuff, I would think we'd be repairing, having to repair less, I'm, I'm just, that's a pretty good, five thousand to ten thousand, what we budgeted, that's, that's twice as much. Usually there's pretty, there, there's some logic to why you double it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna sound like I'm nitpicking, but there's, that's twice as much.
Well, let's, let's do this, let's-
It's less than what we actually spent?
Yeah.
Well, I, but see, I look, I look at this here and I see in twenty-three we spent that, but was that a significant one time of that? What, what did we actually, actually spend in twenty-two?
What have we spent so far?
And if you pull your, what have we spent this year? When I do DPW, Public Works, we- Repair and maintenance supplies, so far, we're four months in, and we've spent one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Four months in, out of twelve months, I'm still trying to see the ten thousand. The five thousand, based on what I'm looking at here, unless there's, there's a certain time that we put a big chunk of money in.
Probably the beginning, probably the beginning of spring. You know, I would guess to amp that up a little bit, but, I don't know. Let's, um, I'm, let's put that as a-
You guys can, if you wanna whack a little bit out of it now, I mean-
No. I, it could be, I, all I'm trying to say is, in twenty-three-
Well, let's, let's do this, let's mark this, let's mark this as a potential for a place that we can save some money.
Come back if we need to?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause it's, it's a gamble, I mean, we spent eleven thousand dollars last year, so it's, it's probably legitimate. But, you know, I, I, I get your point.
So that, that goes for all our park mowers?
Yeah.
Our cemetery mowers?
Yeah.
Our roadside mowing?
Mm-hmm. Not, no, not roadside mowing, was that?
Yeah, they, they, that's right, see, if it was, I wouldn't have a problem, and that's not a roadside mowing there, see?
No, that would be other, that would be other purchase services.
I'm, I'm just, it just looked a little hinky, that's all.
Anything else before we get to outside roadwork, which I'm gonna question?
That was where my question was.
I had that, I had that one highlighted.
If you wanna go up a little bit to the, um, there seems to be some, like, kind of like wide variations, for example, under twenty, uh, zero thirty, five oh one, zero twenty-two point oh, repair and maintenance supplies. Um, we talked about that, but for example, um, hot pa, hot mix and patch has gone up, the net, has gone up from five thousand next year, to last year to seven, to, I'm sorry, thirty-two fifty last year to seven thousand this year. So that's a, that's a fairly significant jump. I'm also looking at the next line, where gravel has dropped from eight thousand to thirty, to three. Are those interrelated, or, or?
So, I left hot mix at the requested level because we, we spent about seventy-five hundred last year.
Okay.
Um, and the cost of, um, petroleum products is going up. So I figured, you know, we'll use that. Uh, in terms of gravel, I cut gravel from the requested amount down to three thousand because last year we only used twelve hundred dollars worth of gravel. I can't, I can't justify taking taxpayer money if we're just gonna-
Well, I understand that, I'm just curious as to why there's this sort of wide variation. What, you know, was the eight thousand dollars we took last year, that was, uh, we just- Well, I understand that, I'm just curious as to why there's this sort of wide variation, what, you know, was the eight thousand dollars we took last year, that was, uh, we just, we just overestimated it completely, or?
What I thought, when, when I looked at it, because Scotch Hill is so bad that we've been patching patches with, with hot, hot mix, that, and we originally budgeted in twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, we thought we'd get the Class Two paving grant, so we, we only put three thousand, two fifty in, uh, to the, to the budget, but we, the problem was we didn't get it, and I bet we used a ton of hot mix again this year, patching patches up on Scotch Hill, is what, why I didn't, I said, okay, it looks like the seven thousand four ninety-eight eighty-one that we spent in twenty-twenty-three, we're saying, nothing's changed up there, we've done a little bit of it, we did that little bit of paving on, on this south end, but there's a lot of hot mix is probably gonna, I don't, let me speak for you there, Nate, but I, I would bet you, you do quite a bit of hot mix up there.
Yeah, maybe, I was trying to do some math on the, I think hot mix right now, I had to look at it, it's like eighty bucks a ton, probably fourteen yards, or fourteen tons, excuse me, on the can, and we did, I don't know if anybody's been on Airport Road lately, like, just underneath the underpass.
Always there.
That's, um, fourteen tons right there, just that section of, so just to give you a rough, like, I don't know if anybody's been there, but great, great or shitty.
Yeah.
So, uh, you see how, like I said, if anybody's been there, but you see how far fourteen tons get.
Well, actually, that's a good illustration, thanks, look at that, gotta give you an idea. So, any additions, deletions, corrections, or? At least, let's check on, see what we can do? And you?
Do possible.
Yeah. To be revisited, um, I'm gonna sneak down to the outside roadwork.
Mm-hmm.
I know you did that to save money.
That's, that's exactly right, I, I cut everywhere, so that's paving, I cut everywhere I could cut, that I felt I could cut without really dipping into the, like, the general operation of the, of the town. And I couldn't find any, anywhere else to cut, so, uh, that's, that's where that came from, that's forty-seven thousand dollar reduction of paving, and honestly, I disagree with cutting that, but I had to find money somewhere.
How far does a hundred and forty thousand in paving go? Would, like, what's, how many, how many linear feet of a road, like?
I think, it's different when you do village work, cause it costs more, cause DI's and all this and curving and stuff like that, but I wanna say it was, Swamp Row was, what was it, it was like a hundred and sixty? Give or take, the woman.
That was pretty, pretty close.
But that's straight forward work though.
That was how many years ago? That was two years ago, three years ago?
Two, yeah. So, I mean.
Yeah.
Didn't we put, like, the one eighty-seven that we had in there, we thought we were gonna do Adams and the, and the parking ride, to give you an idea of what we thought, so, in, now, this, my only question, when I looked at that, I said, okay, but we were gonna put off that paving until spring to do Adams and the parking ride, and how much actual paving are we gonna have time to do, even if we had another hundred and eighty-seven thousand, could we do all that? Would, would they be getting here and, could we schedule with Pike to get all the, there's certain paving that didn't get done this year, and we had money set aside.
Well, no paving got done then.
Exactly, we had, we had, but we had a hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus fifty thousand that was from appropriations, so a lot of money for paving, that money, I take it, is still sitting there for paving, my, my assumption. And I, so I'm going, uh, when I saw, I hate to see paving cut back, but I'm saying, there's a bunch of paving and money sitting there, I guess if I was making the tough decision on how to, how to come back, you can, we could put it back to a hundred and eighty-seven, but if we were looking to get the budget to a certain place, that's probably the place, like you did, that's the place that has the, the least amount of pain, where you're not talking people and.
That's what I was afraid of, was having to touch staff.
But the thing is, if you go less on paving, you're never gaining.
Yeah, you're losing ground, you never.
You're only paving one mile a year, and we got twenty miles in per paving, which is more, that's a twenty-year cycle, and there's not really too many roads that I know that last.
But with the price increase, if we stay the same money, we're still gonna be doing less.
We're still doing less.
Right.
So, people, and this is just my experience over the last couple of years, people appreciate when we pave, they, they can see that their tax dollars are, are being put into their roads and we're maintaining it. I don't, I think that's, for, for the money, I think that's what people wanna see.
Without beating the dead horse on this, you know, like, I'd support keeping it at one eighty-seven, I, instead of cutting it down to one forty, we can't, that, that's really.
I would, I would like to see that stay up.
Let's pump that up then.
I'm good with that.
And move, and move on.
I add something to that though, it's, you know, so like, if we do, say if we do Scotch Hill and stuff like that, it's like trying to do with the paving, but also do, like, have to come in to the shoulder work too. You know what I mean?
We, we can.
We don't really have.
Do you write a quick?
To really properly do the shoulder work.
In the future, that's what we should do, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, I, I hear you.
You know what I mean?
Oh, oh, yeah.
When you put out, when you put out the bids, you put out the bids that way and, and see what it, see where it gets us, I mean, I, why not? It makes sense, they got, they got the manpower in there, they do it every day, it makes sense, but it, it may not be viable.
I figured I'd throw it in there, I mean, it's something you guys can make it if it's a choose and go now, but.
It comes down to how much we get for what we get, you know, if we got a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, does that do what we need to do this year? And with the, with the, with all the side work and handwork.
The only thing I'm gonna say about that is, if the shoulders don't get done.
Oh, right.
In a proper, in a proper timeframe, like Swamp Row's not done yet, there's just no way these guys can get it done with the equipment they have and the manpower. So that jeopardizes the longevity of that road as far as the paving goes.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So, as long as we, as long as everybody understands that.
Right, I mean, the other thing to consider as well is that, you know, by putting it up to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, um, we're essentially cutting it, still cutting it by five, five to six percent.
Right.
And, you know, and that, I, I, I'm concerned about that too, it's, well, to your point about people appreciate paving, it's like, Claire, you said something a few weeks ago that just has stuck with me, which is people aren't stupid, that people know that, 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 that costs go up and, and that things have to be paid for, and so, yes, I do think that they appreciate paving, but I think that what they really do not appreciate is when there's not paving done. So, I mean, when they, you know, and I think that as much as, as much as we need to be prudent, at the same time, we can, I mean, we, we can't keep cutting back.
Yeah, we need to. I mean, it's. We need to show progress forward.
We, we do, and, you know, I mean, it's from what Rich had said in a previous meeting, that, you know, we've put off a lot of things because of COVID and everything else, and then, you know, the, the bill comes due eventually, and, you know.
But you have to sell it.
Right.
You have to go out on the street and talk to people.
I, I agree, and I think that what we need, what, what, and we, what maybe we've had a problem with is telling people, hey, this is the reason why, and this is what we will do for, do, you know, if, if you will agree to this, and so.
That little piece of cement that went up on Washington Street, where a lot of people talk about that already, the mud puddle's gone. Nobody, it probably costs quite a bit, I don't know how much it costs, man, that's a big improvement, and it's visible.
Right.
Really true.
Very true.
My experience, I mean, I'm not saying people don't say anything about paying high taxes or whatever, but if the work's being done, and you're driving on a smoother road and sidewalks and ice, and you don't really fear it coming.
No.
You're, you're always gonna have people who, you know, are, are any reason their taxes when provoke, you know, complaints, but at the end of the day, things have to be done.
All right, moving on, so we're back up to one eighty-seven there, and. Uh, ditching, I mean, it sounds like ditching's being done, but I see the line item as zeroed out for several years, do we just not use that?
Are we doing it under a different line, or?
No, Nate, Nate requested ten thousand in ditching, um, I zeroed that out for, to find money. We do have a lot of ditching that needs to be done.
Did we not, well, we didn't spend anything this, uh?
No, we didn't have any money last year, no, that, that ditching line, it's outside ditching, so we would put up to bid, you know, a company to come in and ditch for us.
Oh, that's outside, okay, okay.
That's not, that's, that's not our people going out and fixing the ditches, paying for some.
I see.
So, we'd still do, and I don't want to think we're not doing any ditching, but, right.
Okay, that's comforting, more.
There again, I think once, once we get some of our help on board, I think they, they will be able to accomplish a little more ditching.
Exactly. I'm good with the rest of that.
Everybody good with the rest of that one?
Well, I actually was gonna ask about fifty-six point sixty, which is the tree removal budget, that's actually been cut down by about forty percent. Um, I seem to recall that we've had a number of tree removal projects in the last seven, eight months, um, and I'm just curious as to what it is, as to whether that is a prudent change, and, Joe, I mean, Pete, how much did we actually, have we actually spent?
We went two thousand.
We've done pretty good this year.
Yeah.
I think the numbers don't justify it.
We've spent three thousand already this year, and I think there's probably another bill or two coming.
Okay, so we're already, right, we're already over that?
Yeah, we've already hit the three thousand, um, again, I, I agree, there's a lot of tree work we could do, but.
Yeah, I, I think one of the problems that I'm, that I'm having and, and is, I, I guess that, obviously, we can't predict when emergencies happen and things fall apart, but there are some long-term maintenance projects where we can identify what we need to do, and I think that the problem with, you know, picking a, a round number like this is, well, I don't know what's, you know, what, what's in the pipeline, and, you know, maybe that's something that will help us be a little, will, you know, help us be a little bit more accurate, which may help us to save money and not push it around unnecessarily, but, um, I mean, is that information that's readily, you know, that's readily available, or?
Far as like.
Right.
You wanna know, like, what trees need to be done, so to speak, and have a plan on taking them down?
Something to the death, I mean, I know you've got, you've got tons of work to do, so I'm not asking you to reinvent the wheel, but it's like, there's some projects that we know has to, that have to be done before we have the emergency or the breakdown or anything like that, and what are those, and then factor in on top of that a, a reasonable amount for the unexpected.
But that's usually, it's like, so it's like three grand, I put in a little extra, I think, I don't have the other one, but usually, like, I'll look at that, and I'll talk to Joe, and like, we just did one on North Main, and we did one here on Main, so like, I asked Joe, like, I wanna take these two trees down, and I try to follow the, you know, the limit of money I got.
Right.
Without overspending, so like, I, well, now, you know, pick the trees I think are gonna be a problem.
Right.
Use the money I got in the budget to take them down.
Yeah.
So Nate did request seven thousand on that line?
Okay.
Once again, that's one, maybe we sneak back if we're.
We, we put it back to five thousand.
Well, I think that's.
Is that what you're, is that what you're?
I, I'm thinking that we probably shouldn't, you know, I mean, we shouldn't cut it, I mean, it's, I mean, anything that's, that keeps the, the, the same figure from last year is going to be a cut, but we shouldn't, we, we shouldn't add additional cuts to that.
Yeah, this is one where I usually go, go back and look at what we spent, and in twenty-three, we only spent two thousand, but I think it wasn't because we didn't have trees that needed to come down, we didn't have the manpower to cut them, and, and you gotta get to cut them, I think five thousand is.
You know, we've already spent.
We've already spent three thousand.
This is also outside tree removal.
Right, yeah, right.
Which, it's not, that's not so much of a manpower issue, except for safety, the manpower comes in when we have to pick them out. If, you know, maybe the property owner would take it, that would help us out, so sometimes that would be deducted.
We've talked about this before, about, you know, issues where we have, where the property owners are the ones who have created the, the hazard or the problem, and that we need to kind of get them more into the mix if we can, it's like, we're not, you know, we're, we're not a landscaping service, you know, here.
So do we come back, or do we just change it to five thousand?
You wanna go back to five and?
Let's go back to five and.
See where we are.
Yep, I mean, it's still cutting from the seventy-asse, it still would be red, but let's.
Okay, let's, um, machinery and equipment is zeroed out, um, what exactly does that, is that shovel and?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a catch-all for all the little things to buy.
Well, there's that, that line item up above, which is small tools and equipment, does that overlap with machinery and equipment?
I think they use interchangeably, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure why the budget has both of those.
But you spent, you spent eleven thou, almost eleven thousand already.
You're almost eleven thousand dollars right, into, into that line item already.
Yeah, why, what, what, what would that, what would that have been?
What am I looking at?
Machinery, put a fifty-one, ten, eighty-three.
Oh, I don't know what that is, that seemed like a, that number doesn't seem right.
Not, not with the amount that, that's already been spent, using the, what, the accountant.
I wonder if somebody applied it to the wrong line?
Yeah, something might have been dropped into the wrong thing, I will.
Well, we should find out about that, cause that's a big deal.
Yeah, that doesn't seem right.
Okay.
We'll just check.
Okay. Okay, winter work? Haven't spent any of it yet.
It's not winter.
Way to go.
I'm gonna look and keep it at seven, yeah.
That's a big guess, there's nothing that can be more guessed at than that.
Right.
That whole section.
Tell you in the spring, right?
Yeah, exactly, oops, all right, then I'm gonna leave as is unless anybody has any of that, it's glaring.
I don't.
Or the overtime salary?
The, the winter work in general.
Yeah, which, which line would the, uh, the overtime come out of for the work on the water main break?
That comes for the water.
That comes from the water, okay, that's one, I, I just didn't know if there was any overlap with the DPW on that.
I think they actually just bill that.
Yeah, water, or, I think we did drop it in water lines in the water department.
Well, in the twenty-one thirty, the calcium chloride, uh, is there any reason why we dropped it by that much? I mean, I'm completely ignorant as to what we use in winter, like, in winter mixes, but I'm just curious if that one just goes leaps out, it's, you know, cutting it by two-thirds.
Yeah, it's, uh, last year we didn't use any of it.
Okay.
So it was, it was a three thousand budget, three thousand dollar budget, um, and the previous year it was a thousand dollar, uh, yeah, twenty-twenty-three was a thousand bucks, we didn't use any of it. Twenty-four, we raised it up.
I apologize, sorry.
No, no, I'm done.
So, still, like, a little bit of it, but we switched to, like, when I first started here, they used a lot of that for, like, dust control on the dirt roads and stuff like that, and they used to spread it with the hopper sanders and stuff like that, now we went to coal melt, and stuff like that, we use that for dust control on dirt roads and kind of switched applications.
I think the state's heavier that we're doing that too, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, the whole bow of, like, mom, and your, New York is actually taking the.
I was just gonna say, I didn't want you to put something.
Yeah, yeah, the whole bow of like mom and your, New York is actually taking the, actually, for the small resource.
Yeah.
Lake George region. Something, something there, they're really taking a hold of the whole less salt, perfectly mild, and using the brine and the technology.
Calcium a lot of times is used for cold, cold weather, nice melt, where, where salt won't work, calcium will.
Calcium's the stuff.
By, by March, you're gonna be an expert. You're gonna hate being an expert, but you're gonna be.
I hope so, because I don't wanna fall and slam my head on the pavement like I did back in February.
There you go. Anything else there? You noted that Nate was a little worried about the overtime. I take that.
No, I was just, uh, I was going back on the other page or this other page, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right.
Oh, yeah, just on the right page, we're good, all right.
The overtime, I will say, the only comment I will say about that, of course, obviously it depends on awareness of that, but I believe the board wanted us, for once this project was done, to remove snow more out of down there. I don't know what the whole outcome was about that, but obviously depending on snow and all that, if you guys want us to remove more snow, that means more time, and time equals money.
It will be interesting to see how that works out.
If we put that down by the outlet, nah, it isn't that far. I'm just saying that this, this winter, I'd love to see, see what it's like to bring that snow down and put it where the old outlet was. You already got it in the bucket loader, instead of dropping it on the side, go down around the corner and, and drop it.
Do it all the way down there from, from over on the bar for the bucket loader.
Then you put it in a, put it in a dump truck.
Yeah, but that's manpower and more time, is what.
Usually you just haul it to the.
Again, you, if you, you can, you can start and do it this winter, or we'll put the parking right in and you won't have the pli- place to pile it, and you'll, then we'll do it, because we have to do it next winter, because next spring, next.
I agree with you, but it's just gonna be more time and more money. So we've, we've gotta face the fact that it's gonna be more money and more money.
I think that's the point they're making, if we truck it.
Still, still gotta be moved.
It's gotta, yeah.
You're still, you're still going over and picking it up and putting it someplace, so I just.
There's the beauty of global warming.
Yep.
Maybe less snow. You guys complaining all the time about such things. Uh, public works buildings.
Based on what we spend, we're spending, it looks like they're right on where they need to be.
Public works equipment.
Diesel took a pretty good jump, didn't it? And that was, and that was cut back. Zero thirty, fifty-three, sixty dash twenty-one, the diesel.
Yep. Where are we at? So we've spent six, almost seven thousand dollars already.
Everything continues as it when we ran out of target this year.
Until some executive needs another house in Fiji.
Yeah, yachts are expensive.
I know. They use a lot of diesel. All right, moving right along, folks. You're not hearing anything. Hydrant replacement is.
Well, actually, I was, I was going to go back up, I was just, um, just curious about two line items, the maintenance supplies and the the repairs and maintenance. I noticed you put on here that the, you've reduced it because of, of new equipment needing fewer repairs, which certainly is true. But, um, are the repairs we're going to have to do going to stay fairly static, or we have to pay more for them?
The, uh, a lot of this, a lot of our repairs, uh, were generated by one unit, which was that green truck.
That green truck we got rid of.
I mean, that thing was just milking us day and night. And we were lucky, Nate, Nate could speak to it, the thing didn't run for, it, it was a challenge to keep it up for every storm, so, um, looking back at the, the, where the money was going, I'm confident that this, this should get us there.
That makes sense, okay, that's, that's fine.
I agree, truck was a suck on our resources.
Yeah, all those repairs made the same thing. As long as we're doing the maintenance, it should be good. Hydrant replacement is good. Debt management is non-negotiable, I think.
So with what we added, that three percent's gonna go up a little bit, but let's, let's, that's, that's okay.
Equipment ones, that, that includes the new equipment we picked up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if I mentioned it to the last meeting, or if I was just talking to somebody, but next budget season, um, we do have some, we will start having payments drop off in the coming years, like some of our large payments, so it is something to look forward to, that that number will come down.
So the first blow through of DPW, we raised a few things. I don't think we cut a thing. That's interesting. And it's truly the case this time of year, wait till December comes, January, whatever. All right. Thank you. Thank you for staying focused, guys. Nothing in the parking lot that's jumping out.
Oh, I knew what I wanted to bring, I don't know if you wanna skip it. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I was just wondering, we got a, just one of the public works building.
No, we went through it.
It's agoric and.
Yeah.
You went all through all that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
You can go. Don't hurt you. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna bring up the, uh, the transfer station operation. You know that, that little thing we got into online with those people about the things that, the, uh, what the hell was that?
Treasures.
What's that?
The treasures.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the treasures, yeah, yes. I was just curious what that, what that was about, because it seemed, it seemed that it aroused a bit of ire among people, which.
The, the thing about that is I don't disagree with the folks that say, hey, you know, we can leave some stuff here. It's just leaving, it, it seems like leaving the things, you know, right in front of the compactor, besides just looking awful. Um, a lot of the things were not treasures. They were just, it's like garbage that they just didn't wanna pay for. So, you know, at the end of the day, it's, I had weeds growing up between old baby toys, and it's like, okay, get rid of that, and, and cut the weeds down. What I do think though, we, we called this swap shop, uh, we called this a swap shop in, um, New Hampshire, and it was, it works really well to keep trash out of the waste stream, 'cause some people do find treasures. Um, what I wanna do is, probably closer to spring, is convert the Dog Pound, the other building, that, into the swap shop, something that's covered where you can put something, and it won't just rot into the ground. But, but also have rules around it. You can't put your television in there, you can't put your something, you can't put your bag of garbage in there, 'cause you.
Yeah, and I, I think that if, you know, if you do, I think that's the, the right direction, and put a timeframe on it.
Yep.
You know, just like a, like a success program, if it's been there four weeks, nobody's gonna take it.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, or, or three weeks, or two weeks, or whatever, whatever you come up with a timeline, and, you know, that they can't leave you a drunk. And so you'd have to, the guys down there would have to approve what gets dropped off, you know, and they could do that without. They can ask if, if any of this can go to that place. We can talk about, but that's a good idea.
How would you control that, in long-term, though? Somebody, say, you go down there and you wanna put something in the swap shop area. But you never go back?
You don't have to go back.
I know, but if that, that item doesn't go, somebody's gotta take it and dispose of it.
Yeah, yeah, our guys.
Yeah, it will require maintenance.
It will take, it'll take, I mean, it's, it's gonna, there's gonna be something, those guys are gonna, they're, they'll have to figure it out, and so the, the thing to do is have them, those guys do the input, along with Joe, they come up with the policies. So it's not too much time out of their way. I mean, the, the one thing is, you could do it simple enough, just say, just say that they make the decision at the, at the shack, they don't just, people can't just automatically go put stuff there, they have to ask, can this go in the, in the swap shop, you know, and then, then the only, I know, it's not perfect.
You gotta argue though, you know, you say it's no good.
No, well, that would be, that would be you guys make, you guys get to make the final decision, everybody else shuts up.
But you know how that goes.
I know, I know, but.
One guy junks, another man's treasury.
Believe me, I, my wife hated to have me go to the dump.
Are, are these items, uh, typically dropped off before or after going on the scale?
Oh, uh, good question.
Because I can clean out my basement, and it's all treasures, pre-scale. I just, I don't wanna be taken that way.
I just think we, we're trying, we're trying to put all kinds of administrative work together here. Quite frankly, I, I disagree with, with, when you go to the dump, it's, it's all trash.
No.
You know, no, wait, listen, listen to me, we, we take in town, we have, we have yard sales, and we can have, we could do yard sales. Everyone, I get it that someone says, I got something I don't wanna throw away, it has some more use. Fine, it goes in on your, on your yard. We do, we do a day of yard sales around, or, or whatever they do, and then you always see at the end of the day, the thing that says free, after, and that's to get the rest of it out. Well, the stuff that doesn't go for free usually ends up down at the goddamn transfer station, the pile starts a little bit. But we, we'd have a pile that would, that could half fill this room sometime. I'm saying that we, and then we got people that have to go pick it up, go ahead.
I will say though, like, you know, we were told to clean it up down there.
Exactly. It's starting to look nice, I don't wanna turn into.
DPW has been cleaning it up. I say it's better now than it's been years down there cleaner.
That's very good.
You know, I know people wanna trade out stuff, but I mean, the reality is three quarters of it is junk.
It's junk.
Well, then that's the decision of those guys, not throw it away.
No.
But, but I, there's, there's stuff that is valuable to somebody, and it really is.
Then you, then you take it to a, a, one of those flea market or something else, but don't take it to the same landfill and put it down there and expect someone else go pick your junk up for you.
The only thing.
Just.
It's all great ideas, you guys all got great ideas. It's one thing we gotta watch. You take it there and to put it into the free area. And like Chad says, are, are they gonna do that before the scale or after the scale? If they do it before the scale, and then the town ends up having to dispose of it, that's a more cost.
So, so the, the immediate answer to that is, you pay for it and you drop it off and, and it.
But, uh, well, yeah, at that point, you know.
You know, you, you drop it, you pay for it to drop it off, and, and then that covers our cost of having some of that back up, backing up and dumping away.
Do it, but a lot of people aren't gonna wanna do it that way.
Well, then they don't, then they go throw it.
So, I, I mean, I know my husband has dropped several things off. We had two air conditioners last year that just, when we put our new windows in, you know, it was an inch. The, the air conditioner was an inch too big, so he brought it down and did, you know, left it for somebody who views it. It was a perfectly good air conditioner.
That's what.
But, but my thought is, you were talking about leaving it, you, you have a specific amount of time, at four weeks. At four weeks, and automatically, maybe you store stuff, and you were talking about a yard sale. Why couldn't the town actually?
Your husband takes an air conditioner down for someone else to use, and that sounds noble. I bring an air conditioner down and I have to pay for it to throw it out. Now, did your husband pay for the air conditioner to be thrown out, and he knows it's useful, and set it down there? Because that's the, and, and do you expect, are people down there to handle that? You, you don't have a Downey Brooklyn. I'm saying, we don't need the place to look like a bunch of hoarders are down there. Again, it looks great. And I, I agree with the decision that said, no, you don't take, you, once you decide it's your trash and you wanna get rid of it, get rid of it.
Let's keep, I disagree with you. Let's move on.
You and I are not in the same place. I'm not, I'm not supportive of going back to what we had.
I am not either.
People have a lot of feelings about their garbage.
Yep. Well, let's move on. We don't have to do anything. We can, if you feel the urge to put a proposal together, that, and then we can have this argument in, in total.
Right.
We're, we're wasting our time right now, 'cause we're not gonna agree.
No, we won't.
Anything else in the parking lot? You can take that zoning reg off.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
The work's not done till the work's done. I'd leave it there.
All right, I got.
No, I wanna hold, I wanna hold.
Okay, fine.
It's not done until it's done.
Yes, no.
Why don't we just have you do everything and we can go home?
I'm, I'm just saying that, that you, you take it off the list, doesn't mean it's complete.
Go ahead, you.
Are we at boardroom?
I think so.
We are.
I have nothing.
I don't believe that.
Let's put it this way, I wanna thank public works guys for helping with the sidewalks. They done a great job, they worked together real well. I, you know, I think it all, it was a good, good effort. So I have.
I haven't got nothing to add to that. Nothing today.
I just wanna thank Rich for working with the DPW guys and helping. You do, you do a lot of help with our, with our guys, and I really appreciate you, you taking and sharing some of your experiences and stuff and.
That's what I'm here for. I appreciate it.
Seven hundred dollars is coming your way, plus taxes.
Five hundred and twenty-seven.
And, and while I'm on the thanking thing here, I think the, the planning commission and the work they put into zoning regs and everything, that's a, that's a lot of unseen, hard, hard work. We do thank you and, and the whole group for the time and energy.
You could have seen what Cindy was doing.
Put into that.
That was gruesome. But thank you, that was, it was, it's nice to be on the downhill slide anyway. You got anything else? The only thing, I, I don't know if you saw in the paper, the Otter Creek, uh, P, whatever they call that, committee for the wifi got a ten million dollar grant. They got ten million dollars. So they're gonna move very quickly through that.
You said ten million, though?
Yeah.
That's huge.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna pay for getting them going and getting all set up and, and contracted.
And that's the committee that Tracy.
Yeah.
I'll spell her name right first.
And that's strictly for, for internet, that's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for.
High-speed internet.
And it's, and it, the, the whole idea is to make, to make a basic service available to everybody. So if we have another COVID situation where people have to be online, that they can do it affordably, affordably, and everything. Where is John Llack in terms of, um, um, health?
The, the state will approve on the first.
Okay.
They'll actually do the work on the first, and he'll get some paperwork.
Okay, 'cause I, I called him, I, I tossed one his way today, so I just wanted to know. And he, he asked if we'd seen anything, and I said, no. That, that makes sense. And one, one more thing, uh, three Slater's teams won, won playoff games on Friday night, and one team came up short on Sunday by one goal on overtime. So we got three out of four of the teams are playing in the playoffs at this time, which is kinda cool. I don't know that I ever remember seeing that, that happening. I don't know that I ever remember seeing that, that happening.
It's pretty good.
Financials.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the general warrants for fifty-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the checkbook status is one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-one cents.
That spares me. Does it? Yes, it does. Okay. Executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session under one VSA three thirteen A one.
Second.
That's personnel?
Personnel.
Is that what we're going into?
Yes.
Yes.